All right, candidates, good day. Welcome to the Four Well Beach Chamber of Commerce. We're grateful for you being here today. Again, I'm Ted, President and CEO. We have Nick Chubb, who's our Chair. We have a good collection of our community leaders who are here today and Chamber members to hear this endeavor. Brian Christians is videotaping this. We'll put it on our Facebook and on the Chamber website. For those who could not be here, we'll have a chance to see it. I want to share how we're doing this today. Emily over here is our timekeeper. Emily over here, there she is. Two-minute intro, two-minute close, it comes to that. Ninety seconds for each question to be answered. And we do have a... Do we have cool music or we got a variation? She's going to stand with 15 seconds left and then some kind of little musical...
This is what it sounds like.
So when you hear that noise, that'll mean don't stop directly. Just finish your thought in such a way. And we appreciate you not being here the first time. We wanted to kind of segregate the candidates from each section. But after you're done, as some of the others have done, well, I see her. I'm sure Lamar's here somewhere. They're going to stay and listen. And we have the Daily News representative here also, so we're excited to have you. Any questions? Thank you very kindly. So we've got you in alphabetical order, two-minute intro, so why don't we start with Albie, is it Clendenon?
Yes, it is.
Clendenon, Albie, thank you. Albie, why don't you start for your two-minute intro, sir? You can do it from over there. And if you want, you can sit or stand, it's up to you.
I'll just stand. I think you're agreed probably with the two minutes. I'd first like to thank the Greater Wall Beach Chamber of Commerce for having me here today and for hosting today's candidate forum. To give a little background on myself, I'm a recent graduate of Biggers School and an upcoming freshman at the University of West Florida. Because of the great future, I was able to build for myself in the Oaklus County School District. I decided that I wanted to run for this seat here on the Oaklus County School Board. Throughout my years of schooling, I ascended to a myriad of student leadership positions. Those positions included Gator Club president, eighteen-year varsity track athlete, WGTV production manager, yearbook design editor, student government officer, aspire tutor for OSW, RAPs, robotic med store, and a front office aide. While attending school, I learned more than just how to do that. I've come with a force. I also learned what it's like to be educated in our district by witnessing firsthand my mother's over fifteen years of service to the Oaklus County School District. I also learned what it's like to have a parent, to have a parent that's on a phone per month at a time, for months at a time, because I have a father who works for logistics in the United States Air Force. He, of course, distilled in me the importance of being detail-oriented and a hard worker. As a result of these attributes given to me, I'll be able to use them in pursuit of the betterment of Oaklus County Schools District. Thank you.
All right, well, welcome, Albie Clendenon. You're nice. There's a small time of transition, which we've had.
We're having it.
All right, so there's a very slow transition, so welcome. Linda Evanscheck, two-minute welcome.
Yes. Good morning. Linda Evanscheck, I'm for District Three. My tagline the entire campaign has been "Oaklus educated, Oaklus dedicated," because that does sum up a little bit about who I am. I was raised and educated in this great school district, and for thirty-eight years, I spent my time as a classroom teacher. I retired in June of 2017. I feel that I had a great privilege to get to work with the students and the parents and the citizens in this great school district. And now I would like to change that venue and become on the school board so I can continue to work with them. While I was a teacher, even though you might say, "Well, how were your experiences in the classroom allow you to be on the board?" I was not an inside-only-the-classroom teacher. I was very involved outside my classroom in a lot of different activities that the district had. I worked with students on all levels, a lot of different projects. My academic area was journalism, and my students created a newspaper. And so we worked in a lot of different ways and a lot of different projects. So I have a vast amount of experience in a lot of things, working outside the classroom. I was fortunate that my colleagues recognized me. I was this district's Teacher of the Year. I've been inducted into the National Teachers Hall of Fame, those things. And recently, in this position as a candidate, my fellow teachers and employees have endorsed me for this position. So I feel like I am greatly qualified to take this on. I'm eager to do it. I feel like it will continue to be an extension of the way I can serve Oaklus County Schools, students, and their parents. Thank you.
All right, welcome, Linda Evanscheck. We appreciate that. And Dr. Joe Schlescher, with your introduction, sir.
Well, first off, thanks for having us here. It's early in the morning. We've been so busy, all the candidates have been so busy going from one place to the other. One thing for sure, I have learned every inch of this county, putting up signs and knocking on doors. I've met a lot of people that I never would have known. But let me tell you a little bit about me. I originally started in 1970 teaching up in Kentucky. And I've been here since 2000 in this school area. In 1970, I started off as a teacher. I wanted to be in a coach, a guidance counselor, a student affairs liaison. In 1974, we had busing in Kentucky, making national news. They were turning over buses, and we had riots. And they merged two large school systems to make the seventh-largest school system in the entire United States, seventy miles across that one county. We had forty-six high schools. We had more than that in middle and high... Altogether, 212 schools in one county. So it was huge. And so the federal government started a program, and it was under the Emergency School Assistance Act, the ESAA. And it was to help schools that were going through busing. And the busing, and I hate using that term. I did learn that busing only has one S instead of two. I did learn that. And when we got into the busing, they had problems merging the two school systems because the two school systems, one was predominantly African-American, the other was predominantly white, although we had Hispanics and Orientals. We had to eat differently. I don't know how else to say that, but it's what we had. Very diverse group, because Fort Knox is there, Fort Knox, Kentucky. And so we had a huge group. They appointed people, trained people to be student affairs liaisons. We watched regained activity today, for gang activity and for drug abuse. So I got certified, and I went ahead and got my certification in administration and got my doctorate in special needs. And I didn't have enough time to tell you everything I needed.
That's fine.
Well done, Dr. Joe. Welcome, welcome, all of you. Thank you for that. I feel like I know you all by seeing your signs and names all around town, just something. So all three of you are new candidates, have not, no incumbents, so I'm going to start off with a question for each of you. We'll start with Albie in this case. What motivates you to become a board member?
Hold on, just a second.
I'm sorry. You need more time to think about it.
We're ready now.
Okay, again, same question to all. We'll start with Albie. What motivates you to become a board member?
Well, what motivates me to become a board member is just quite simply all the time that I spent inside the school district these last few years as being a high school student and a middle school student. I witnessed firsthand how sometimes budget shortcomings can affect our different student leadership positions and how maybe a different role was implemented or policy, how that affected students, and as well educators, since my mother is an educator in our district. And I witnessed that firsthand, of course. And it just, what motivated me to do this is I wanted to be able to make a difference for both myself and, well, not myself, but for the school district, simply because the school district has given me everything I have. It's given me a home, and it's given me just a bright future ahead. And that's a big reason why I just wanted to be able to get out there and be a school board member so I can make that difference in my community that has made, well, me, me. Thank you.
All right, Albie, welcome. Very nice. Linda, same question. What motivates you to become a board member?
Well, as I mentioned in my introduction, I was a classroom teacher, and I continue, I said I want to continue to work to make a difference with the students. And I think that we're at a pivotal time in our district, that we've had, we have a great district, and we've had a lot of success, but we've had some challenges that we've not had to face in previous years. And I do think that we're kind of at a crossroads, so to speak, and that we need some people who, on the board, who have the background. You know, it makes sense, and when I'm talking to people, it says it makes sense to have that teacher voice on the board. That is that perspective needed. I don't think everybody on the board should be an educator, but to have someone from the classroom, where that's where it's all happening, is in that classroom, makes sense. And I can be that voice. And so I'm motivated to step up and have done that, to become a candidate, to be there so that I can be that voice from the classroom.
Thank you, Linda. Dr. Joe, same question. What motivates you to become a board member?
Well, I started four years ago. I ran against Mr. Walker. He was the incumbent. He's stepping down now, so it's an open seat. And Mr. Walker, most of you that have been in this county know that it wound up being a tie. The final was nine votes separated the two of us. And that's not really a tie if you lose by nine votes. But you know, I sat back and I kind of got frustrated, said I wasn't going to do it again, but I had a lot of teachers contact me, special needs, and that's where my heart is, is with the kids. And every child in this school system, every child, from the kindergarten and pre-K all the way up to the ones in seniors and even the ones those in collegiate, we need to have a special program for every single child to make sure that we take care of their needs, whether it be VOTAC, whether it be college prep, or whether it be something just to go into the trade or to the job world. We need to prepare these kids. And we need someone to sit in that seat for Mr. Walker, where Mr. Walker's now sitting, that will take care of that. Someone with administrative, budget, curriculum, and policy background, and I have that. That's the biggest difference between the three candidates, is who has that background and that experience. And I have the heart for the kids, and I'm going to stop before that thing twits.
Thank you, Dr. Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, for the very timekeeping. I'm going to go back to Albie, and I'll ask a question. Given that the board did not approve a sales tax referendum, how will you propose to fund the nearly $150 million in identified projects in the district?
Well, the big thing for me, since we weren't able to fund the house and sales tax, I think we definitely don't want to look at the property taxes for sure. People are already, don't want to see raised property taxes. That just isn't fair to ask the residents always to do all that. So a big part of me is that while we weren't able to pass a house and sales tax this time, as a board member, I will most definitely pursue it in being able to fund the school district for our different capital improvements. Many of you may not know, but at one of the last school board meetings, they found out that they can't actually afford the SRO program. We're short on that. We're going into reserve funding. So we need to figure out how we're going to fund our school district in 1919, or making sure that it isn't going to have to be our property taxes. Thank you.
Very good, Albie. So again, follow-up question, what I heard you say was that you are in support of a local optional sales tax at some time in the future.
Yes.
All right. Linda Evanscheck, same question. Given that the board did not approve a sales tax referendum, how will you propose to fund the nearly $150 million in identified projects in the district?
Okay, I think what we need to do is to look at the district structure. You know, we have over 400 district office employees. I think we need to look at that and see if all of those positions are important, because we've added a lot of different positions in that, instructional coaches and those things. Not to say those aren't important, but we do need to look at that structure. I think that has been bloated over the years, not into under one particular administration, but in general, and we need to go back and look at that. When you cut, of course, you want to start at the top and go down and look at those salaries and expenditures. Certainly, you want to keep as many things away from being cut from the classroom, everything that's in the classroom at the center. I know some people talked about cutting out assistant principals at the elementary, but I'm against that. So we need to look at the budget now and see in what ways we need to look at those salaries and different personnel that maybe are not essential, because we're just in a crisis situation. It is unfortunate that we cannot have that sales tax, because that would be the way to go, and I would be in favor of that, yes.
Yeah, thirteen more seconds.
You got, oh, yes.
Sometimes less is more.
Yes.
In such ways. So Linda Evanscheck, just again, I ask a follow-up question. Candidate Clendenon, you are also in favor of the local optional sales tax for the school district, is that right?
Yes.
Very kind, all right. Dr. Joe Schlescher, the same question, sir. Given that the board did not approve a sales tax referendum, how would you propose to fund the nearly $150 million in identified projects in the district?
You know, I see that, first off, the infrastructure in our county is hurting, and in our school system is hurting, because so many of our schools are aged, sixty-year-old buildings that are just falling apart, some of them that toilets that just keep running. At the end of the day, the custodial staff has to shut the water off so the toilets don't continue to run. We have problems. I've looked at two other counties. I looked at the Skimby County over in Beulah. They're opening up a new middle school there, and a new elementary school's opening up. In fact, the middle, the elementary's already ready to be opened this year. And they did that by raising the sales tax. And over in Baldwin County, I spoke to Eddie Tyler, the superintendent over there. They're building new schools. And at first, it didn't pass, and we had a tax initiative before I moved here that was passed, and then later on, they tried it again, and it failed. Right now, they pulled back on that because of all the bad publicity. I'm just going to use that if you let me. And I think that they pulled it back for a good reason. Right now, they're trying to get the house and sales tax referendum for the county structure. We need to find a way. We can tighten our belts. There's always ways, if you have your own budgets in your homes, and you know you can tighten your belt if it comes down to that. We have to find a way to get the things taken care of, not just to build new buildings, but fix the ones that are in disrepair now and make our classrooms the very best they can be for our students and for our teachers. That's the main objective.
So, Dr. Joe, thank you. Emily, Dr. Joe, following up, as I asked each individual candidate, are you in support of a local optional sales tax for the school district?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to pin that down. All right, then, very important note there. All right, let's continue. We'll go back to candidate Clendenon. What policies or policy would you propose to see enacted or changed if you were elected and won?
I would like to see a change to how we go about just, I'm trying to figure out how to word this, just how we go about with having our SROs on our campuses. Right now, when it comes to having SRO, typically under high schools with the new policies that are set by the state, we have to have two. As of right now, it tends to be both males. And while that may not seem to be a big deal to girls in the classroom, it really is, because then they want someone who's relatable whenever an issue comes up on campus. One thing I would like to see is to have both a male and a female SRO on our campuses instead of just two male SROs, of course, that you'd really hard to be able to implement, but it'd be something that I really wanted to pursue, because it ends up making our SROs more approachable to both sides of our students. And of course, I want to be able to see an SRO on Laurel Hills campus. Their campus is huge. They deserve a second SRO, just like every other secondary campus here in Oaklus County. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Albie. Same question to you, Linda Evanscheck. What policy would you propose to see enacted or changed if you were elected and why?
Yes. Well, what I would like to see is a three-pronged approach to school safety. We talk a lot about hardening of the schools, which of course talks about infrastructure and so forth. And of course, that is important, that we do that, the one way in, one way out, and so forth. But I think that all of that is external, and we need to look at some internal things in schools. Having worked with particularly teenagers for so many years, I think we need to look at more mental health counseling. Our current school counselors are academic counselors, so to speak. Not to say that they don't work with students when they have problems, but we need to have more trained mental health counselors in our school, so that those students, we need to work with the community. We have Mental Health Association. We need to work with community sources to help look at the problem, because just trying to keep the bad guys out is not going to get it. So I would work on that approach as well. In addition, we need to work on changing the culture inside our schools. We need to find a way to let students know that it's okay to share that you think a student's having a problem. I'd like to see a teen hotline where students can call, similar to Crime Stoppers, something like that, kind of in between the crisis line and Crime Stoppers. That way, they could find a way to let people know, or they have a problem. So I think we need to look at our safety in those three different ways. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Evanscheck. Very good. Dr. Joe, same question to you. What policy would you propose to see enacted or changed if you were elected and why?
School safety and security, it's the main, it's the main thing that we need to work on. You know, I'm going to glean from what Ms. Evanscheck said, because she's correct. We need to find a way not to be reactive to these problems and try to keep the bad guys, I'll use that, out. A lot of times, the things are internal that happens inside our school. And over in Mobile and some of the other, they had the bully block, and they have a number where the kids can text, four digits, and they can find out somebody's bullying them. You know, a lot of the things that happen in the school, the children know about this. And I'm an older man, so I'm going to use the word kids, okay? The kids know about this. They know about it far before, way before a teacher knows about it, or maybe the SRO knows about it, or the administrators. And if we have a panel set up with the teachers, the teachers that children can relate to, and there are children in the school that are the most sociable, not the smartest usually, not the ones that get in the most trouble, but you have your social butterflies and bees, I'm going to say, in the school. If they could go to these certain teachers that they know they can relate to, and the SROs in many cases, and say, "Look, this is a problem Jimmy's got with Sally. This problem could blossom into a bullying thing." We need to work from the inside out, and then also put our safety around their outside, make our buildings more safe and secure by having that one way in, one way out, and secure lobbies where teachers and people coming in and out, parents with problems, kids would have to show an ID. We need to do that. That is the biggest policy problem, I can see. Not a problem, a concern.
All right, thank you, Dr. Joe. Again, as it turns out, time flies. If you're having fun, I could sit here and ask you questions all day, but because of timeframe and travel, we'll do closing remarks. Is that what you think, Mark Franks?
I think we'll do one more question.
One more question, okay. Jenny, you had a question with the Daily News, any pop it up? Because we have several areas we want to ask. You had a chance. Nick, any questions you can think of? We have several that we prepared in advance. Anything you'd like to see? I'll just read off one of them.
Yeah, just, "How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out?"
So, Albie, we'll start with you, sir, on that question. Oh, there it is. "How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out?"
Well, it's a very easy question. We just have to talk to our parents and our students. We need to ask them, "Hey, how's this policy working out for you? How's it affect your day-to-day in our classrooms?" It's very simple. We just need to be able to communicate better with our parents and our students. Student leadership is a huge part in making sure that our campuses are what they are today, and we need to make sure that our teachers, and our parents, and our students, that they're getting whatever they need, that our policies are working. We need to make sure that everything's going correctly, and if we're talking to one another, that ends up being in everyone's favor. So that's how you do it. Thank you.
Well, Albie, last. Same question for you. Linda, "How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out?"
Well, I somewhat agree with Albie there in that, you know, all the stakeholders, you know, you can tell if those things are working. You know, your citizens will let you know, the students, and our students are successful. As you know, our school district is an A-plus district and has been. We had 21 A schools, 11 B schools, three C schools. So you're seeing all those things. There's all kinds of data that comes out that you can see how that's working, but the most important thing is the feedback that you are getting from the students, the teachers, the employees, and so forth. That's how you see if things are working, because all the data, of course, can be skewed in a lot of different ways. But certainly, listening to your constituents and what they have to tell you and feedback of things that are happening, I think that's the best way to know if it's working.
Well done. And Dr. Joe, same question for you, sir. "How can a board know if its policies are being accomplished and its policies carried out?"
I like the fact that the first two candidates laid some groundwork for it. It makes it easier for me. It's clarity, it's consistency, and it's communication. We have to have those three Cs in order for this to work. And you say, feedback, you need, means a feedback from the, not just the students, not just the teachers, not just the parents, but from the entire community. We're one whole big family when we work together. And if you have the clarity, you have the consistency of your actions, and you have communication. Now, some people don't have access to the computers on a daily basis, so there has to be a phone system where they can call and say, "Look, I've got this concern." Or we can get attaboys. They can go in there and give us a thumbs up on this one thing that we did and say, "This is, this is the way it should be. This is, we need more of this." And get feedback. And we can also do surveys within the schools, and let parents do anonymous surveys and how things are working in the classrooms and in that school. This works, but once again, you must have clarity of action, you must have consistency of how you react to things and what you do, and you must have communication between all levels.
Well done, Dr. Joe. So due to time, we're going to do closing remarks, and Dr. Joe, we'll start with Albie, so I'm going to start with you and work your way down here, sir. Dr. Joe, same here, two-minute closing remarks, sir.
You know, I look forward to this. I had one person ask me this yesterday. We were at the Wyndham, and the lady asked me, she said, "Why are you doing this?" And I said, "To me, it's a mission. It's not a job." In fact, when I, four years ago, when I went to the supervisor election and I went to the university, the Kennedy University, I had no clue that it paid a dime. And I promise you, I didn't, it has nothing to do with money. It, to me, and I don't, and I've seen it is with these two candidates either, it's a mission. It's something that I believe that at this stage in my life, I've gone through the education, I've been an administrator, and I've been at every level. I've done everything but be the lunchroom lady and the custodian in schools. I've done it all. I've been there, and I had the vast experience, and I had to carry it, because 31 of my 46 and a half years, I was in a classroom. And I taught everything from special needs kids, and I even put a 212-pound 18-year-old boy in a toilet. I had to be able to do that because the teachers in that room were too small to do that. I've done it all. And I taught the higher level. I taught calculus and trigonometry. And some people, they have a hard time even spelling those two words, but I taught them. Not that I'm that bright, it's where my heart is. And I want to be on the school board. It's a desire to do more for the community and to help our kids. My slogan is "Kids First." I say that all the time. It's all about our kids. That's why I want to be there. I want to do it. I want to serve you, and I want to be able to do it for the community, but mainly for our kids. Thank you. And I appreciate your vote on August 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joe Schlescher. Linda Evanscheck, two-minute closing remarks.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have a big decision to make come August 28th, with this being an open slate in this District Three, coming after, you know, what you consider maybe a legend in that position of 24 years. It's difficult, because you really don't have anything to go on except what you've seen and heard from us, and that's, that is challenging. But as I said in my opening, I really do see this race as a, as a crossroads for our district. And you know, many of you sitting out here are community leaders. You know that as the strength of the school system is part of the strength of the communities in this county. And so it's vital that we all have this interest. I am invested in our county, having grown up here, having worked here, and I think that investment is important when we're looking at this race. Many of us in this room were educated in the 20th century, which was great, but in the 20th century, the goal of teaching was assimilation of information. And we did that, and we're continuing to do that. Students coming in another generation, our current generation in this century, they are not just assimilating information. They have information at them, just like we do, all the time. We need leaders in our education, our school boards, who have worked with students in the 21st century to help them navigate this, to help them understand how to use this information for their best interest. I can do that. I've worked with students in this century. I know what their needs are, I know what the curriculum is. So I'm asking that you please elect me to continue to do what I can do the best for the students of Oaklus County. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda Evancheck, and candidate Albie Clendenon, two-minute closing remarks,